Agenda, so we might as well call this meeting to order. The June 11th Board of Education meeting. First item on the agenda is communications and recognition.
Well, I'll start if that's okay. I wanted to personally thank all teachers and administrators for, this will be my last meeting with my kids actually enrolled in the district. And I cannot thank everyone enough for getting them through. I feel almost as if they have attended a private school at this point. It has been a long, long road. The distance learning was not always pretty and it wasn't the fault of Stonington. It was just the nature of the beast. But, you know, I've had the principal show up at my house for pep talks with kids. I've had the guidance counselor involved with pep talks for kids. Teachers have been incredible in trying to communicate any concerns. And in general, I think that the high school has gone above and beyond in trying to put together a special end of the year for the seniors. And even though I know the difference because I have one that's gone through graduation before and I know how special that ceremony is, I am very grateful that they will have something special to look back on and not just a recorded video. So I just wanted to thank everyone in person for that.
Any other communications and recognition? Okay, I know I have a slew of them. It's strange to think that it's June and it's the end of the year and we usually do all these wonderful things in person and get to stand around and talk with all these great people. So instead, we're doing this virtually and then I'll certainly reach out to all of them after on behalf of each of us. We do have some retirements this year. We have Joe Pinto, a full-time custodian, who has put 19 years into this district. Thank you. We have Dave Paduzzi, full-time custodian at Dean's Mill, 14 years and eight months. Alan Buck, full-time custodian at Dean's Mill, 19 years and eight months. Manay Santiago, full-time custodian at the high school, 28 years in this district. Thank you so much.
Do we have any custodians left?
Poor Peter. I guess it's on him. Elizabeth Basette, full-time nurse, West Vine Street School, just about 21 years. Neil Kerland, Stonington High School Assistant Principal, six years. And Catherine McKenzie, she will retire, I believe, in October, 23 years. Deb Silva, paraprofessional, 27 years, eight months. Leslie Champ, Dean's Mill, paraprofessional, 33 years and three months. Wow. I recognize a lot of these names. I've had four kids go through these schools and these people all meant so much to them as they went through. Thank you all for your time and your dedication. And they will all receive a resolution which will be signed. It's from the Board of Education. It will state that this individual has devoted much effort in his or her job assignment to the extent that he she has held an high admiration for his or her dedication and personal contribution to the varied needs of the Stonington Public Schools, to the extent this person is held in the greatest esteem by all. The Board of Education in a regular meeting assembled on June 11th to the valuable service rendered by this individual to the cause of education to the town of Stonington. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread on the minutes of the Board of Education and that a copy be presented to this honored individual as a testimonial of the Board's sincere appreciation, loyalty, character, and service. And thank you all so much. And it's so disappointing that we can't see you all in person, share cake and conversation, but we will touch base with you soon. Also have Carrie Latham. Congratulations to our Stonington's first ever Par儿education of the Year. This is a great honor. She is one of several of our talented par儿educators nominated for this honor. A plaque with her name will hang at the district office and she will serve on next year's Par儿educator of the Year Committee. And this allows her name to be put forward to the Connecticut State Paraprofessional. So good luck in that, Carrie. Becky Fowler, Director of Food Services, was chosen for Snacks Rising Star Director for 2019-2020. Becky has been Director of Food Services for Stonington Public Schools for the past four years. And I think we've all seen over these past few months exactly what Becky puts into the food services. She's really risen it to a whole other level. And thank you so much, Becky, for all that you do. You've done a lot over the last few months and our families and the community greatly appreciate you. And also, I would not want to forget our wonderful Board of Ed rep from the student government. Ally has gone above and beyond this year. It's been an interesting year and she has really put the time and effort and dedication into her role as the representative to the students and to the Board of Education. Ally, thank you for everything you've done. And again, sorry that we weren't there to wish you farewell in person. Hey, Ally.
Thank you, guys.
You're very welcome. And good luck to you.
Thank you for the flowers and the gift card today. That was so nice and it really just made my day. I appreciate you all so much and I'm so glad to have been able to be a part of this for the past year. So thank you, guys.
Congratulations. You're very welcome. My last communication or recognition goes back, goes to the movements, the marches, the community, the world, our state at this time. Just a small statement, I don't know if anyone here besides me remembers Gillian Wilson. She's a very dear friend of my daughter's, went through school with her at Stonington Middle School and the high school. She graduated with her in 2008, went off to Temple University with her and Jillian still writes down and lives in Philadelphia. She wrote a wonderful article.
Lilly.
Candace, you might want to.
Lilly. Come on, I can't have the door shut and the dog in.
And Gillian wrote an article, "One Way to Be an Ally Right Now: Support Black Mental Health", was posted and printed in the HuffPost. So she's been published and wrote an article that's very pertinent to all of us at this time. In Jill's article, Neige Austin, founder and CEO of Ethos Club in Brooklyn, New York, is quoted as saying that non-black people should continue educating themselves, continue donating, and open up their world to what we are used to already and to continue to be part of the conversation. I look forward to seeing what our district continues to do, what we as our board includes in our goals going forward, and also what is included in our curriculum currently and how we continue to expand. I look forward to continuing to be part of the conversation. Are there any more comments or recognition?
Yeah, I guess I have a comment. I wasn't quite sure where this fit in because I wanted to respond to a letter that the Board of Ed and Curriculum Instruction Team received. And it is really a suggestion I have because of the letter. But you were now speaking about this and the letter addressed Stonington's role in the fight for justice. So can I bring that up now or do I have to wait for comments, Board comments?
I think it depends on what direction you're taking. Where do you think it would fit best? Are you recognizing or is it, it's a communication?
Yeah, but it was like what you were recognizing. It's a communication, but I also have a suggestion of what we should do because of the communication.
Okay, we could leave that for the end if you wanted. If you had a spot where you wanted to discuss it?
I don't. There's no spot. I mean, I guess I'll wait to Board of Comments. But it segued from what you were saying, so that's why I was stepping in.
You know what, if you'd like to say it now, let's just say it now so we don't forget it.
All right. So I'm inspired to make this suggestion and to make this comment because of a letter that I know that we all got. It was titled "Stonington's Role in the Fight for Justice", and it was received both by the Board of Ed and the Curriculum Instructional Team. It was sent on Monday by a recent graduate of the high school and she wanted our school system to know, to think of ways we could deconstruct racism and prejudice, as what you were talking about, Alexa. She wondered how our school community planned to make a difference in combating racial discrimination. And I really appreciate her focusing us on this current issue. She mentioned some suggestions for action like curriculum change, additions to language arts, the language arts syllabus, bias awareness workshops, diversifying staff hiring, which are all really important discussions and I want to recognize her for that. But I think they're discussions for our Board and committees and it will take a while to put into effect. What I wanted to do is to act now on our concern for racial discrimination and its ugly byproduct. I think we as the community's education center need to help lead our community in some sort of dialogue about this. And I appreciate having this letter as an initiation. And maybe at the end, we could then comment on what my suggestion is, which is reading a book for our Stonington community, our whole Stonington community, read it. And once having read the book, there'd be a remote discussion, perhaps at the beginning of August it could happen, led by some of our staff and social workers. And questions would be fielded from the public. I had a book in mind, which is called "Why Are All the Black Kids Sitting Together in the Cafeteria", by Bev Tatum. I read it about 10 years ago, but an even better revised edition has just been published. And the message of the book summed up in a recent review is that bias, explicit and implicit, limits options which produce deadly encounters and gnaws away at a fabric of our social contract. And I think such a book would inspire discussion from the public and help us to move forward as a community team to deal with bias before we are steeped in the deadly encounters that Bev Tatum refers to. And then as well, we can address some of those issues that were brought up by the Stonington graduate. But I think that we, as I say, I think that we should have some kind of plan or strategy to encourage a dialogue as the education center in Stonington, encourage a dialogue about this very current poignant hot issue that now exists. I think we need to have a stand on it and not just to stand, I think we should have action. And so that's why I suggest a group discussion from a book and led by professionals. So I will ask about that, I guess at the end, what people think.
Thank you very much, Heidi. Are there any other communications and recognition? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. It is a full one. Do we have any comments or items to be discussed on the consent agenda? If so, we can remove that item and approve the remaining and then open up that item for discussion.
Yeah, I would like to remove employee contracts. We'd have a discussion about that.
Okay, so you'd like to approve consent agenda items A through C and remove D for discussion?
Exactly, thank you.
Do we have a second?
A second? I second it. Am I on?
Yes, you are, Heidi.
Sorry.
So we have a motion and a second for the consent agenda A through C and a removal of D, employee contracts.
That's fine.
Is there any discussion on A through C? Let's move those for approval. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any nays? So A through C is approved and D is open for discussion.
Okay, I'll start if that's okay. So this is very difficult for me. I actually, I hate to admit this, but I lost some sleep over this last night, which no one should lose sleep over a Board of Ed meeting, but I did. Because of the ongoing pandemic, you know, what I've seen from my business and my customers, my friends, there's some real financial anxiety out there. A lot of people are struggling. They're trying to just keep their head above water with their bills. They're worried about paying their taxes. And in light of the fact that we're more than likely going to have a discussion tonight, in fact, I think we are going to have a discussion about eliminating jobs, I can't in good conscience support these contracts the way they're currently written with an increase. And some of them are with like a 2.6%. I read through all of them, 2.6% increase with an additional cash amount. One case it was, or two cases, it was $2,000. Another case, it was $5,000. I'm assuming that's some kind of a bonus or maybe trying to bring us in line with what other districts are paying for that position. I'm guessing on that. I think we need to be in touch with what's going on in the real world. And the fact that we're even voting on giving administrators increases in others while we're potentially basically eliminating jobs for others, it just doesn't seem like we're really in touch with reality and what's going on in the real world. The Federal Reserve Chairman today spoke, I think his name is Powell, Chairman Powell, about how this pandemic is really affecting our country and how he unfortunately, of course, we all saw what the stock market did today. It could really have a long-lasting negative impact. And I have seen, you know, when I go to lunch, there's places I used to visit are going out of business. It's not right. And the problem and the reason I lost sleep is because these people deserve raises. They're doing a great job. They're doing an exemplary job. And after being on the Board for three years, I've gotten to know them and they deserve it. But the fact is, you know, in the private sector right now, there are a lot of people that are doing an exemplary job. And you know what? They're not getting a 2.6% raise with an additional $5,000. It's just not happening. And so I can't be a part of an organization that is not really focusing as a team. We're all in this together. And in my opinion, we all need to take a little, we all need to suffer a little bit. So if I had my way, there would be no increases for any town employees across the Board. And that includes teachers, by the way. I mean, I just read this morning, I was just trying to do a little bit of homework, that some districts, some municipalities in our country have set up a system where if their tax receipts go down, it automatically opens up teacher contracts. I don't know if we have something like that in place. I'm guessing we don't because it was just a handful of districts in the article that I had read. One in Philadelphia, I think another one in California. But, you know, to reiterate, I think we need to really rethink at this point in time. And I think, I honestly believe from everything I've read, and of course, there's so much out there, a lot of misinformation. But I think by the end of the year, we could have a vaccine and the economy could really start to fall back and, or comeback, I should say. I know Connecticut hasn't been as hard-hit as some other states. I think our unemployment rate's around 9%. But I think the way things are going right now, I just, I can't support an increase. And I'm sorry for that because I honestly, honestly believe that some of these individuals have really transformed our school system. And I could go right down the line and tell you why, but I don't think anybody really wants to hear that right now. I just, from an outsider looking in, as a taxpayer, Board of Ed member, a small business person and lifelong resident of our town, this is not fair. It's not fair to give these people an increase and then cut jobs on others. It's just not right. So that's my two cents. And if we have a vote on it tonight and I don't vote for it, please understand it's just, I'm trying to vote my conscience on this and what I think's best for our town. Thank you.
Thanks. Do I have other comments?
I'm going to comment on what Jack said. I didn't lose sleep over it because I actually never sleep very well. I'm tossing and turning every night. And I have to agree with Jack. You know, I did my budget at work today and we're talking about furloughing, Rhode Island's furloughing two days a week. It's just a really hard time to justify raises when so many people are out of work. You know, we put up a job posting today at work. We had two people retire on Monday and we put it up on Indeed and we got 400 applications in 30 minutes. And it's just indicative and the people are very qualified. People are just out of work all the time and it's really hard. And then to give, you know, Jack said it way better than I did, but I think we really need to look long and hard. I'm not saying that they work hard, they deserve raises. I couldn't give anyone in my office a raise. It's just a hard time. We're looking at retroactive raises at the end of the year when this is over, maybe revisiting in a couple of months. But I don't think this is the time when we're laying off people. We need to, we're all in this together. And I think that it's a, we're all in this together. And to be in this together, we all have to suffer a little bit. And that's my two cents as well.
Thank you, Elise. Other comments?
Okay, sorry. I'd like to say something. So I, along with Jack and Elisa, I am supportive of deserving people getting a raise, but I don't know if this is really an appropriate time for this. But what I do know was that there is a budget set of $37, 400 million plus dollars and it was accepted by the town. And granted, these raises seem to fit into the budgetary guidelines. But then I have a problem when I read the personnel cuts. And these personnel cuts occur to stay within the budgetary guidelines. And as I read, these seem to include paraprofessionals, high school science, K through A technology. An elementary librarian is being shuffled around. I didn't really understand what that was about. But librarians are also media specialists and those are definitely needed. There was a West Vine retired staff that's not being replaced. And a Spanish position in the high school, I don't, I guess it's not being filled. And then a middle school art is being compromised. This all totaled, I added up $505,000 and $505,000 plus. So I just can't agree that this is the best choice for the education of our children, for administrators to be given raises and impactful personnel to be reduced, as they said, reducted. So this is not a commentary like what Jack said on the competency of our administrators. I see it more as an acknowledgement that there are real struggles of distance learning and we need to seriously reconsider our status quo, no longer just business as usual. We need to realize that we are in a crisis, a real crisis of learning. And not only to give serious consideration of allocation of money, but be creative about instructional strategies. This is a really tough decision-making time, but I would not support the raises for the employee contracts at this time for the reasons that I stated.
I would say that administrators are by definition impactful of student education and are essential to carrying out effective student education. And all town employees were given a 2.6% increase this year. I don't know why our, the school would be any different. And I would completely object to not keeping those in the budget, in the contract. We are the lowest-paying school district within our Derg consistently. We just finally beefed it up for the teachers this year. We're still at the bottom of the barrel. The teachers stay here because of the collegiality, the sense of community, the things that Dr. Riley, you know, has created and provided over the years. It isn't, they don't work here because of the money. No one works here because of the money. And at this point, I don't know why most people even want to work here, but I would not support a cut.
I would second much of what Candace said. I mean, administrators are just as essential as the teachers and the other employees. And in addition, it just doesn't seem appropriate to single this small group of people out of the whole town operation for being the ones. That logic, if that is the appropriate logic, should be extended to everyone and not just these few people picked out at this late date. So like Candace, I would support their contracts.
We just cut two administrative positions out of the budget this year.
May I comment, Chairwoman? This is one of the items that I have reviewed along with our team in the Finance Committee. And I just want to give some logic and some background to why they made it here and to the budget or to the agenda. We've looked at the median for many school districts around us and we looked at the individuals and their positions and we tried to bring them up to par with the rest of the school district. The town had given the 2.6 for the rest of the employees in the town as well as there were some pay adjustments that were approved or that were submitted by the Board of Selectment and approved by the Board of Finance. So I didn't feel, although I'm hit as a private sector or private business with this pandemic and its impact and the economics of it, I had to also put my other hat on and try to be fair to our team and try to be fair to the people that.
I did that survey, sent me. Sorry.
So I wanted to be fair to them. So that's why I did support it in the Finance Committee and I do support it here. Thank you.
I just want to comment that I don't think we're singling out only administrators. I think as what Jack suggested at the very beginning, that we need to think of this and as I said, this is a real crisis. And so it is no longer business as usual. And I didn't, I'm confused about administrators being town employees because when we were talking about the separating off the insurance, then the teachers weren't considered town employees, but now they're considered town employees. separating off the insurance, then it, the, the teachers weren't considered town employees, but now they're considered town employees. So I'm, I don't know if we're singling out. I think we are making a statement as a, um, a learning community that the most important thing is, is our children at the moment. And if we can, we, we saw how much it's going to cost to, to do some of our ideas for, um, education in the, in the fall. And it's going to be quite a bit of money. So everybody has to pitch in and decide how they're going to, how we're going to make this work. And giving raises at this time does not seem as an appropriate effort of cooperating to make this very serious moment in our history and in our education history. Is it time to be giving out raises for anybody? Now, I don't know about the town, the town workers, but I don't think anybody in our education system should be getting a raise now. I think it should all be going into a pot with it. We are going to then use to, for our distance learning effort, whatever the strategy is. Um, I think a, a few days in, a few days out is a really good idea. Because, um, what's happening now is really this remote learning with not checking in with teachers and having, parents being professional educators is not sustainable. So we really need to have money that we can work with. And I, um, you know, I, I, as I said, I don't think it's a commentary on the, on the expertise and the capability and the competency and all the things that the administrators have done. This is just a time when we need, everybody needs to, needs to address an emergency. It's a crisis. When crises happen, it, it isn't same, same, same thing happening.
Thanks Heidi. I, I think the reference to the administrators and the town was that the town got two point six five, two point six seven raises. And some pe, some positions in the town got significantly more substantial raise to bring them up to comparable pay to those who are in other towns. I think that was the reference. It wasn't a reference that administrators were, um, town, um, employees. I'm, I'm not sure if that was confused. Van, did you have anything to add to the discussion?
Well, we keep talking about administrators and, um, the, excuse me, the, um, the group that you see is there are some administrators there. There's also all of the district office clerical and the tech staff, the occupational therapist, on and on and on, food service. So it sounds like you're talking about not wanting to give administrator raises, but there's a whole list of things there. And, um, the, the money was in the budget. We actually reduced it slightly. We had in there more than this, what was equal to, uh, the teacher group. And we reduced it to match what the board of finance felt was important for the town. You have an amazing group of administrators and staff and food service and that whole list that we're, uh, recommending that you approve. And those people deserve to have what the rest of the town has and, and more there. You need to keep your employees. You need to, to make adjustments when you need to. And now's the time that they deserve it and you need to make that decision to, uh, approve those contracts. That would be my recommendation.
Van, I can, yeah, I just, I didn't understand about, um, the secretaries and the food service and so on. They, I didn't see that they were getting raises.
Everybody, everybody gets a two point six.
Oh, everybody in that, a list got a two point six?
Yes.
Wow, that's even, um, more.
Just like the town, just like the board of finance approved for the town, all the employees there and all the different departments receive that. So.
And, and so the entire town, all the entire, all the employees in the town got a two point seven raise this, this year. And all of these people that worked for our school are considered town people and the, and the board of finance approved their raise. Is that correct?
No, the board of finance, the, the town's budget included two point six percent for all of the town employees. And the board of finance approved that budget. They could have made a line item veto and changed it. Our, our, we're trying to, we're not, I don't want to confuse who's a town employee or not. These are district employees. Everybody's paid by the town budget and the board of finance decides how much, you know, where the money goes. And that's, uh, so that's what I'm saying. The town people receive this and it's fair for our, our staff to receive the same.
Yeah, I'll just ask one more question. Um, when was, did this approval happen? Did it happen before distance learning began, before the pandemic? Or did, did, did this happen in the middle of it? They were, that the board of finance was, um, feeling so generous that they said that absolutely all these people could have, um, two point seven, um, increases in their, in their pay.
This happened during the budget process.
That was before the, um, before it happened. So.
No, this was because we didn't finish voting until, uh, on the budget until May.
Well, I, 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 I don't, I, I, I feel uncomfortable supporting this and I'm feeling comfortable being part of a group that is so, um, engaged in education and that is going to go ahead and vote for this. And I'm, I'm sorry about that. I, I really am because I don't think it's supporting the, the, the bot, the student body that we should be. Because we're going to have trouble when it comes to distance learning, um, financing.
We're, we're going to have more trouble when people leave for open positions in other districts. So that's a bigger, bigger concern to me. Because there are open positions. So it is not as if this is the only job in the state for these people.
Yeah, real quick, I, you know, I really tried to do my due diligence and I went on Indeed last night. Spent quite a bit of time and I, it seemed like we were right in line. I can't imagine someone would leave, um, our district for, at least what I saw on, on Indeed, the positions that were being advertised. So.
You need to go on to CT REAP.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I think I also can speak for teachers as, as well as Candace can. I'm married to one, as you all know, and I think teachers stay in the district. It's, it's not all about the money. It's about many things. Um, mostly about living in the town of Stonington and having the opportunity to go down on Stonington Point and have a picnic after work and, and.
They don't live in the district.
So.
They don't live in this town.
Well, I, I think we're, perhaps we're ready to, perhaps we're ready to take a, a vote on, um, on date. I, I think the discussion has continued. And I do, I think we're ready to put a vote to, um, have a motion to approve the employee contracts and then we can take a vote.
Motion to approve employee contracts as presented in the under consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, uh, if, as we vote, can I have people's names just for the record for Anna? It will be much easier. All in, in favor?
Greg.
Candace.
Rook.
All opposed?
Elise.
Jack Morehouse.
Heidi. Well, I don't know.
We heard you Heidi, thank you. And, uh, I am in favor of approving the contracts. We have four yays and three nays for the employee contracts. The motion passes. Oh, and I'm sorry, I went straight to the consent agenda and I missed the comments from, from citizens. I will go back to, um, that now. There, there is two, um, sets of comments, uh, very specific as far as this goes. And one set is for keeping the library position. And the other is in regards to, um, sending our kids back to school in the fall. So I will read the, um, keeping the library first. There is a pile. I will try to do it within the twenty minutes. We, this is something that we're talking about tonight, so I believe it's very important. People hear everyone's points of view. Uh, the second is in regards to, um, distance learning or going back to school and all the issues. And since that won't be a vote tonight, I will go through that for twenty minutes. And then I will supply everybody, uh, with those emails so you can read them and have them, the administrators and the board. And I will also make sure those are all, uh, part of the minutes. So first, keep the librarian, Carol Nausic. Good afternoon. I understand there is a referendum this week where the librarian position is under consideration to be cut. As a former teacher, I am aware of the positive impact that the media specialist has on a school. It is imperative to keep an expert in the field in order to have our youth and educators receive the most knowledgeable services in the library sciences. Keep the librarian, Carol Nausic, Dolly Ave. Dana Adrian Dupont, uh, from Nautilus Way, Stonington, Connecticut. I wanted to take a quick moment to voice my concern of cutting the librarian in our school district. As a mother of a student with an IEP, our school librarian is someone my daughter counts on for assistance and picking a book weekly. If it was up to her, she'd come home with a book three years ahead of her reading ability where the librarian is able to direct her to something more appropriate. She has a difficult time comprehending what she reads alone. Library time is a way she can enjoy and connect to in an area of difficulty. I know there are many other parents with children who have special needs or learning issues. And the librarian is so vital to really emphasize the importance of reading and fun, how fun it can be. Do not remove such a vital person in our schools. Thank you, Dana Dupont. John Wilks from Pocketuck. Mark me as opposed to the rumored proposal to reduce the, the school library staff. In today's environment, I believe it's more crucial than ever to provide a quality access to the widest scope of information services. Our young people need to learn to delve more deeply into the hot headlines to find the truth. Jean Wilks, to whom it may concern, as a retired taxpayer payer and a voter in the town of Stonington with no children or grandchildren in the school system, I strongly support retaining all library media specialists currently employed. In today's society is most important that students have their best current knowledge available to them on how to navigate, understand and effectively use the tools needed to be successful in school and in the world in which they will eventually be adults. Thank you, Jean Wilks. Renee McKem, McKemmon. Kindergarten through fifth grade are formative years where students learn to read and also delve to the love of books and reading. Eliminating a librarian who rotates between two schools, serving close to a thousand students denies our children a professional who is trained in developing and cultivating the love of reading and how a library functions. The Board of Education has attempted before to eliminate this necessary and vital position. And we improve, implore you to ensure a full-time professional librarian is available for both of our elementary schools. Our son attended Dean's Mill School to, for two years where there was no full-time librarian and little to no instruction, organization or emphasis on the joy reading occurred during that time. It would be better if each school had its own librarian, as there is plenty of work among the two schools. But having at least one full-time librarian to serve both schools is a necessity along the lines of an art, music, language arts, math or science teacher. I have concerns as to who this particular position is proposed to be cut over others. As this is not the first time this has been proposed. With the literacy becoming digital, the librarian's role has expanded beyond printed text to understanding how and where to find factual, valid and reputable information. In an age of fake news, teaching our children how to validate an argument is a life skill that cannot be overlooked. Please do not eliminate this important position. Lisa Kenyon. I am deeply disheartened to hear about the potential elimination of the library media specialist from the two elementary schools. If anything is already a shortcoming, that each elementary school does not have its own full lit, library media specialist to support instruction and build a robust collection. That means the needs of students and staff. Perhaps the two thousand nineteen School Library Journal article research confirms value of school librarians would be helpful in explaining that there is a direct correlation between student success and availability of a library media specialist in the building. Librarians are not only teaching essential information, literacy skills. They are encouraging our students to value reading. They assist in the use of ever-important technology and if anything are needed now more than ever. Beyond these test scores and research, librarians are trained to build collections that encourage a love of reading in our students. It is the library that students get free choice and can become lifelong readers. Having someone simply available to circulate books cannot replace this valuable position. In the scheme of the entire budget, the value of this position that serves two schools and our entire elementary population far outweighs the dollar amount. Please reconsider eliminating this essential position. Sincerely, Lisa Kenyon, Pocketuck. Christine Ambrose. All for keeping the, all librarians in our schools. Don't cut positions that are important and have such a positive impact on our children's educations. How sad to think this would even be considered a position cut. Ben and Christine Ambrose. Elaine Latier. I am writing to express my concern over the elimination of the school librarian position for Stonington Public Schools. As a school librarian, I am shocked that a school system as well regarded as Stonington is not able to provide this for our students and teachers. Without a school librarian, our schools are missing out on critical library skills that are crucial to lifelong learning. While librarians are often thought of as just the book ladies, they're more than that. Librarians bring quality instruction to the areas of digital literacy, ethical use, internet safety, research skills, evaluation of resource, and of course, the literally literacy skills that promote the love of learning. Our students deserve to begin practicing these skills early and regularly. High school library media specialist will only serve to reinforce skills taught in the classroom and give our students a firm foundation in the skills that will serve them, not only in their K-12 experience, but in their roles as global citizens. Given the current state of our country with virtual learning on the forefront and protests about racial inequalities, we need our librarians to be ready to assist our students and teachers find the resources to help them navigate the vast amounts of media coming at them, to help them make sense of the world around them, to find credible and reliable resources, to honor and respect the work of others, to be the educational leaders they are. I hope that you will reconsider your stance and reinstate the funding for the full-time librarian. Elaine Lightner, let Lantern Hill Road, Stonington. Heather Pescatello. Good evening. I am writing as a concerned parent and teacher in Stonington. My concern lies with the budget meeting being held without a referendum. I specifically want to express my concern with the plan to cut the elementary librarian position. I am attaching a publication from the American Library Association entitled, "One Hundred Things Kids Will Miss If They Don't Have a School Librarian in Their School." I will highlight just a few of them here. Digital literacy, synthesizing information from diverse perspectives, acquiring twenty-first century skills, respect for copyright and intellectual property, resources that broaden their gold, global perspective. I urge you to take a closer look at this resource. It is an absolute disservice to our elementary schools to eliminate the library media specialist from our schools. Thank you for your time. Chris Halbert. I feel that the removal of the elementary librarian position is a bad decision. Test scores are increased by having librarians. The amount of work that Ms. Anderson has done in working with the builders to create the new library, media space in West Vine and Dean's Mill should not be punished in this manner. Additionally, a younger librarian will connect the students better and have to learn more about technology than the teachers that have been around for a while. Ms. Anderson has helped out many other teachers with their computers and other electronic devices and removing her position. and removing her position when schools will likely not be back to normal in-person classrooms seems like a poor decision. The ability to continue to teach the kids from home and provide books to the students who may not have any at home is a very valuable thing. Especially important in our current climate is teaching about equality. I have not seen any formal statement from the board on this matter, yet Ms. Anderson has provided multiple resources for parents to help teach their young children what equally means and what it should look like. I would request that you strongly reconsider removing this position. Additionally, would suggest removing some of coaching and field maintenance positions, as the state is not likely going to reopen for sporting events this fall, especially if students still distant learning. Thank you. Chris Halbert. Jose Rayanoso. I have been notified by West Vine and Dean's Mill Elementary Schools are expected to lay off the library faculty. I am deeply saddened by this and believe this is an incorrect move by the administration. Librarians are vital to the assistance of reading and learning of the students' educational experiences. They provide a comforting invitation to the critical source, which is the library, that is unfortunately being non-existent with today's technological world. We need to continue to have faculty that guides these students of the importance of the librarian's resources. The librarian also adds assistance to areas where a busy teacher cannot be able to handle on its own. So I ask the faculty members in the Stonington Public School Commission to revoke its plan to remove the very important task as a librarian that is greatly needed for the students of Stonington. David Gwen. Stonington resident. It has been brought to my attention that due to budget concerns, an elementary school librarian position is being cut. As a resident of Stonington for the past seven years, it saddens me to hear that such a valuable position within the school system would even be considered to be let go. There have been multiple studies that have linked quality librarians and library programs to students' academic success, whether it be test scores or graduation rates. And the fact that we as a community are weakening the library program makes me wonder how much emphasis we are putting into our children's education and their future. I know that when I was a student, the librarians introduced me to new books and played a significant impact in my passion for reading. As I grew older, they were an invaluable source of knowledge and help for any research project or paper. In conclusion, I hope you have all reconsidered the decision to remove the librarian position. Sarah Lewandowski. It has been brought to my attention that a library position in our district is to be cut in the near future. This information disheartens me to the core. I was part of advocating for a full-time position. DMS was in dire need of a professional certified librarian. Books were outdated, cataloging fell by the wayside, and physical libraries falling apart. A team effort fundraising by the BTO profits from book fair, but most importantly, a hiring of a certified librarian made a world of difference in the school of our students. It pains me to see the efforts being taken away. Please think and remember that the students of our town are our number one priority. We have an obligation to go above and beyond the minimum requirements mandated by others. We are better than this. Please consider this request for me to keep the full-time position in place. Let's not take 10 steps backwards. Thank you, Sarah Lewandowski. Karen Lindberg, Pocketuck. A library is more than a collection of books and materials. It is the hub of information and resources cultivated by knowledgeable librarians. Kristen Anderson-Halbert is the librarian at both West Vine and Dean's Mill. However, if the proposed budget cuts go through, she will no longer have a job with Stonington Public Schools. In these uncertain times, it is more important than ever to have librarians who have been referred to as the original search engine before Google. Students and staff look to librarians for guidance. If you have a question, a librarian knows where to find the answer. It is a reassuring thought to a person who is in need. Research has even shown that schools with full-time certified librarians perform better on standardized tests. To leave one school, whether it be elementary or middle, without a librarian would be a disservice to learning. Another job of a librarian is to find just the right books to include in the collection. Kristen always knew the reading interests of her students at both elementary schools. She understood the value of diverse books to help support a school climate of acceptance and empowerment. Recently, a children's book author said, "We write books to change the world. You read them to imagine what the world could be. Work with us to make a new one." Librarians get those life-changing books into the hands of students. In addition to knowing the reading interests of her students, Kristen also taught them the value of that checking online information, how to find sources for research projects, the importance of online safety, and how to navigate current daily technology. Please do not cut the school librarian position. The elementary, middle, and high schools need Kristen Anderson-Halbert, Betty Pacelli, and Sue Prince. Without them, the beautiful school libraries are just another collection of books and materials. Karen Lindberg. That is all for the support of the librarian, and we did that within our 20-minute timeframe. I thank everybody for those who wrote those in. Those are part of the minutes. And I can also forward those to the board members for the reference if they'd like so later. There is also comment on returning to school in the fall. There is a stack of them, as you can see. I'll stick to the 20-minute timeframe that we allot in our bylaws for the public comment on a specific topic. I will share these with all of you. I'll send them to you tonight or in the morning. And they're also all, whether they're read tonight, if I don't get to them all, they'll all be attached to the minutes. As we're not taking action tonight on the distance learning, we'll have time to reference those. And also, I would like to be able to share those. I've asked people if I could share those with our state representatives, so they know what our community is looking for in their education. And I've put them in order of the time I received them, so that it goes in as if they were in line. The first one I received is from Kevin Torres. I understand the difficulty in returning to school. However, I would ask that the multiple buildings we have in town be used for school to help spread out children. Consider not having buses for the fall. Consider starting school earlier in the year and ending earlier, like many colleges are doing. Not returning to continue the great work of educating our students in the community shouldn't be the decision. How we return should be the discussion and plan going forward. Thank you for all your hard work on this very important plan. Kevin Torres, 52 Ridge Road. Rebecca Durham. I would like the school to be reopened in the fall. Parents have to work. Our incidence rate in the region is extremely low. Here are some ideas to help keep kids and staff safe. Testing. Test all employees seven days before school begins. This will identify any asymptomatic carriers. Two, mandate that all students and teachers are screened at home each morning for temp and symptoms. Require that the data be entered via web application. This info can then be automatically tabulated for each school. If their symptoms are present, they must stay home. Providing those without a thermometer, a thermometer is a whole lot less money than some of the other costs mentioned in the article. Mandatory hand washing with alcohol-based sanitizer once you step on the bus and once you enter the school building. Hand sanitizer in each classroom. Hand sanitize each time you exit and enter the room, and before all snacks and meals. Masks. If we start now, I would bet our community would step up and make the majority of what we need. One-time masks could be reused until soiled, and cloth masks need to be laundered on a regular basis. This would not require a new mask each day, saving the district money. Thank you, Becky Durham, Pocketuck resident. Nicole Torres. The number of COVID cases in New London County and specifically Stonington, Connecticut are low, as are neighbors in Washington County, specifically Westerly, Rhode Island, who are planning to return to school in the fall. We've done the best we can for the last few months during distant learning, and it's kept the number of COVID cases low in our community as we learn more about this virus. It is our observation that distant learning is not sustainable long-term. It has become apparent that for academic, social, and emotional growth, our students need to return to the classroom. We are in favor of students returning to the class in the fall. For example, temperature checks, reduced class size, and reducing change in classes may also be beneficial to establish a committee, as we had for the middle school consolidation and the building committee. We are also open to discussion of reduced school day to include core classes only, split sessions, or hybrid of school and at-home learning. Some other suggestions considered is utilizing former Pocketuck Middle School to neighboring community to reduce busing. Surveying parents who may be able to drive or carpool students to and from school. Some colleges have opted to eliminate traditional fall breaks and going straight through to the end of Thanksgiving. Offer students an option of at-home or in-school learning. This is a very challenging time for everyone. We urge the town of Stonington to find a way to support students, teacher, and staff to safely return to school and meet budget increase to operate with the COVID guidelines. Respectfully, the Torres family. Jennifer Rothman. First, let me start by thanking you for your work and trying and for considering what is best for our children in the face of unprecedented dangers and confusion. That said, I urge you to think about the way that you are presenting the virtual learning model as the lowest-risk option. For the remainder of this school year, I think that was what was provided. Fine and frankly, was really impressed that it happened as well as it did. I commend the teachers for quickly pivoting with so little time for preparation, the district for providing meals for so many in need, and providing devices that all students had access. The presentation that you provide outlines in tremendous detail with the full return and the medium-risk options entail. The low-risk virtual model has almost no detail, but how that would look for students or on the way that you might imagine that landscape and costs involved. Rather than considering this model as a default, where we bide our time until going back in person, can't we utilize the collective creativity of our teachers, admin, parents, local nonprofits, businesses to create a virtual learning model in the new world for what could be done? I believe there are even opportunities in this model that could provide a better learning landscape for what we return to normal. Please, if this is what our future looks like, let's spend our time and resources, including financial, to build something new from the ground up. Let's consider the barriers to virtual learning and be creative about solutions. Can libraries or nonprofits be spaces for small group learning? Can we look towards those in our community licensed to provide childcare and build partnerships that support learning and childcare during the day? Can we create a network of parents through our PTO that can support one another? Can we be more creative about what learning looks like? We have a world classroom aquarium, museum, local nature centers, yoga studios, nonprofits, and gyms. Can we not build partnerships with these resources and ask our town to come together to support the learning needs of our children? Can we build a task force beyond those in the school district and board have been committed to tackling these issues, facing virtual learning and finding solutions? Can we also not say that there is at least the least expensive option, when essentially what you are doing is passing on the cost to parents and the long-term kids? Can we include in your budget the expense of childcare and lost wages that families will incur? I will compare this line of thinking to the industrial food model, where food costs are so low because of factory farming. But when we pay these costs, environmental cleanup, and healthcare costs due to poor nutrition, we may not be paying the cost of PPE equipment. But we will soon be paying that towards our children's education and emotional well-being. Do not pass on these costs. I support virtual learning. I am most comfortable with that option, but only if those costs are considered and covered. Sincerely, Jennifer Rothman. The next one is Michelle Kirk. COVID-19 clearly presents a challenge that none of us have faced. It's highly contagious, and for the high-risk groups can be far more than lethal than the seasonal flu. I supported the March shutdowns of schools and local businesses so that we can flatten the curve. I support the rules currently in place, such as limit of large gatherings and other activities deemed most risky for the spread of COVID-19. Nonetheless, we need to plan to live with this virus, at least until the advent of a vaccine. In my view, this does not mean ignoring it. The virus has not gone away. But instead, finding means to achieve our most important social goals is the safest way possible. Educating our children is one of those goals. I do not envy the task ahead of the Board of Education or Stonington Public Schools' leadership. Nonetheless, I was disappointed by the lack of creativity outlined for the ideas in the article published yesterday in the day. It was particularly vague, not at all helpful, and contained no granular rules whatsoever. Importantly, though, the preamble to the vague guidance said that schools should determine whether and how to implement these guidelines while adjusting to meet the unique needs and circumstances of local community implementation should be guided by what is feasible, practical, acceptable, and tailored to the needs of each community. Stonington has 32 cases, and from the last report I've seen, our population in 2018 was 18,449. This is an infection rate of 1.7 of 1,000 residents. Germany has considered leader in success of addressing COVID. Schoolchildren returned in May, yet Germany has roughly 187,000 cases against a population of nearly 84 million. So that's a 2.2 rate for every 1,000 residents, higher than Stonington. I realize Stonington compared to one of the world's largest countries is not statistically similar comparison, but I think a useful illustration of the very low infection rate of our town. Therefore, as the CDC notes, there is no one-size-fits-all approach across the country. Our town should surely consider its fortunate compared to larger cities with a much higher infection rate. Dr. Fossey himself noted material regional differences in a recent interview. He said to CNN on June 4th that keeping schools closed in the fall out of safety concerns due to coronavirus is a bit of a reach. He noted regional differences in levels of viral activity and said, "When you talk about children going back to school and their safety, it really depends on the level of the viral activity and the particular area that you're talking about." Some situations, there are no problems for children to go back to school, and others, they'll need to have modifications. I am not suggesting that we return to school as though COVID-19 has gone away and could not become more active in our community. I do suggest, however, that we make decisions in the context of our circumstances. I also suggest that we do so with creativity. For example, I assume that there's some rule requiring towns to calculate bus services based on enrolled population. The bus cost seemed to be the most prohibitive. I understand that we want to ensure for now until more about the contagion level in children that we have adequate bus space for social distancing, given the unique circumstances that we face. However, I'm sure many parents would be willing to sign a waiver of bus transportation to commit to self-transportation. This would reduce the currently calculated need for extra bus space, yet still enable transportation for those kids who would still need it. I saw a news footage in South Korea that kids entering a building after being scanned by a thermometer of a sort that may many of us purchased in March and have never used. Could a parent volunteers be engaged to do this important work each morning? As far as masks, why do schools provide them? We all have them by now and can organize a community effort to provide them for those who don't. Bus monitors. High school and middle school kids should be told that not listening on a bus is violating a cardinal rule and may need an automatic suspension. I appreciate that the lower grades may need supervision, but I would be troubled to think that the middle and high school cannot follow this rule. In terms of accurate baseline in August, in Germany, I understand that kids had to take COVID tests before returning to school. In terms of physical space, I had some very quick thoughts. I would assume that we would plan to use auditorium and cafeteria space. Consider focusing more on classrooms on core classes and leaving electives as distance courses. Finally, importantly, we have vulnerable populations. These would require a great deal of thought. But Facebook Live events or similar means of broadcast could be explored. It is my hope that the Board of Education will engage in planning a committee comprised of teachers, school leaders, staff, local medical staff, and parents to address fully these issues. Regards, Michelle Kirk. Stephanie Tuck. The money could be found to send our kids back to school in the fall. I have two kids in the district. One is suffering from increased social anxiety due to being home. My other child is required extra support from teachers and paraprofessionals, as he doesn't thrive in the distance learning model. Socialization and learning face-to-face is a large part of a kid's development. I'll be willing to donate or pay for a semester if needed, even though that seems ridiculous. Stephanie Tuck, Pocketuck. I will read one more, and then I'll provide the rest will be part of the minutes and also I will email each of the board members and administrators. Anne Folling. First of all, thank you for what you do to support the guide of education and students of Stonington, Connecticut. I can't imagine how difficult this situation has been for all of you as members of the Board of Education. The decisions you have to make are not easy, and it doesn't look like it will be getting any easier. any easier. While I understand the need to be smart and prudent about the decision and how to best re-enter educational life in Stonington, I am concerned about what appears to be a tearful and overblown reaction to the virus and our local community. It feels like we have lost our grip on a reasonable and balanced response on how we get our kids back to school. I have heard many different scenarios of what school will look like next year and in all of them, the end result seems to be a series of unrealistic draconian measures of cleanliness and distance from each other that will be close to impossible to uphold and cost millions of dollars that we don't have to spend. And an alternate to continuing the virtual learning at home for the foreseeable future does not seem like an ideal or adequate educational solution for the students of our community. There has to be a balance. At some point, we are going to have to learn to live with this virus, taking reasonable measures and precautions that do not require us to shut life down because one student gets sick. There has to be a balance. I do not want my kids to grow up in a community where fear of getting the coronavirus is at the forefront of their minds because they are required to stay six feet from another classmate, have to wear a mask all day and watch their school get deep cleaned anytime someone touches a surface. There has to be a balance. Being in a school environment and the CDC is recommending with all of its requirements and restrictions is certainly not conducive to learning or teaching. There has to be a balance. Thank you for taking the time to read this. I certainly don't have the answers and I don't envy the decisions you have to make, but please consider the potential ramifications of those decisions. I have to be honest. I'm much less concerned with contracting the virus than I am about getting long-term psychological and emotional effects that continued isolation or severe school restrictions will have on our kids. Thank you. Now, as you can see, yes.
I'm really sorry that you didn't read those at first because I just wonder, we representatives of our community to listen to their hue and cry of this crisis? And would that make people reconsider the idea of having a really flexible pot of monies that we can use to create a creative strategies for teaching and learning? I usually we have those first, but I think those are really impactful. Never, we had so many comments. And remember, we are representatives. This isn't just about us. This is about an entire community. And will we have the money to do the kinds of things that they're asking? And you say you have many, many more to read. I think we need to consider that. And if you want to reconsider a vote, I would be perfectly happy to listen to that.
But I believe that this goes towards our budget going forward and goes towards our working with the state and our representatives and guidelines from the state on letting us know what we can do and maybe releasing us from some of the obligations. So I think I'll continue to send those forward to all of you. And it's basically great to hear the community's opinion on whether they want to go back to school with our schools open or whether they want to be at home. One person said at home was okay. It seems like everybody else wants us to find a way to get back into the school. So I think that's what our representatives need to hear and how do we let them know? How do you help us do that? The next item on our agenda is the curriculum discussion and approval. Mary Ann had asked if there had been, if there had not been any questions, if we do this, approve this on a first read, if there are questions or concerns, we can certainly put this off. It may delay it with the summer and all that, and I think they wanted it for help with the curriculum, but I will leave that up to other board members. Are there any questions on the curriculum that was presented?
Will Encore continue to be part of distance learning?
As of today, Heidi, yes, but again, these decisions are kind of fluid at the moment. That will be kind of something that I will address under the superintendent's report in the distance learning update.
And man, I just wondered if we've been collecting data on Encore, you know, like how kids that are taking these Encore courses, do they pursue the interests that they are doing in college? Or is there an attitude change toward learning from elementary to middle when they have these motivational sorts of classes? I think it's-
This is the first year, Heidi, that the Encore's have been offered and in fairness to their impact.
Yeah.
I think we'd be better off when we return to normal, whenever that may be, that we take a look at what that means in terms of choices of coursework that they select at the high school level and then onward. Certainly that was the intent, was to expose them to a lot of different kinds of content so that they could find areas that they might want to pursue later on or equally important, eliminate further on as well.
Good. I mean, I think I just wanted to have data to be able to support that.
The curriculum that is listed here, we do need, if there are no questions on it and people feel comfortable, we can certainly approve this tonight. If people have more questions, I'm happy to put this off for a second read. Do, are there any opinions?
I'd like to make them, am I on?
You are.
I hear you.
I apologize. I'm really a Mr. Magoo when it comes to this. I would like to make a motion to accept the curriculum as presented A through C.
Do I have a second?
Greg.
I'm sorry. I have a first and I have a, I have a motion, I have a second. Do we have any discussion? No discussion? Do I have a vote for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, all in favor. Thank you, motion passes. Next is the report of the superintendent of schools.
Yes, thank you. You know, the last two months have reinforced the respect I already had for our teachers and administrators and all the staff in the district. The capability of our school community, including parents and students, to respond and be creative is not at all surprising. Given the turbulence and uncertainty we face, I'm so very proud of our resilience and the ability of our educational community to adapt. As we work cohesively and productively as a team, we will look back on this challenge as a time in which we can be very proud. We're dealing with restrictions from the CDC and directions at the state level. Through all that, I just want to remind us that we do have a stellar team of educators. It's unbelievable what they did in a short time to provide an amazing instructional program for our students. We will solve this together. I'm very confident in our team. And with that, I would like to ask Mary Ann to give a summary of the distance learning program that we have now. Mary Ann?
Happy to do so, Dr. Riley. So I'm going to give a brief overview of where we are in the process of kind of revising the plan and then some highlights of what the changes are going to be at this point. And I just want to warn you that you're not going to get to see it until the teachers get to see it. So hence, listen closely. The K-12 Distance Learning Plan Team met and reviewed the survey data from families, staffs and students before working on suggested revisions at each instructional level. Every effort has been made to preserve the features of the current plan that have worked well for all stakeholders and use the feedback from all constituents to strengthen the model. We know it's not perfect and we know it can be better and it will be better. A more structured framework that includes a daily schedule will be in place for students and teachers should the remote model need to be implemented at any time during the upcoming school year. All the suggestions from the committee were reviewed by the leadership team, the curriculum squad and the president of the Stonington Education Association. The updated plan will be edited by tomorrow and shared by the principals with teachers before the commencement of the summer break. It's important to note that the updated Distance Learning Plan will address only the structure of the instructional periods or blocks, not how those times fit into the school day or week. The principals are working on schedules for remote learning models in case we need to return in that fashion at any point during next year. Again, the daily and weekly schedules for each buildings are not included in the updated versions, but will be added when the principals have confirmed those once the board has given direction on what the model will be for returning next school year. The major shifts in the updated Distance Learning Plan are as follows. A standard number of live teaching sessions each day, which varies by grade band and content area, moving towards the CSDE's recommendation of the 50/50 rule, parents and students both wanted according to survey results, more live sessions. That important connection with their teacher is something that came through loud and clear and I'm sure does not surprise any of you. Instruction will take place according to a daily and weekly schedule for both students and teachers. Hence, it will resemble more of the traditional school day rather than the model that we used to be sensitive to families and staff members unprecedented ask to work in an environment in a timeframe under emergency circumstances. The district will create and provide standard tutorials for accessing platforms and programs for students, staff and families. We did that somewhat this year. We will continue to provide those and expand those offerings. There will be consistent formatting of virtual classrooms, meaning the Google setup for all classrooms will be very similar so to make the transition both for students and teachers, I'm sorry, students and families, helping their students at home to be a little bit easier and less confusing visually. There will be daily checklists for grades K through 2 and weekly agendas for grades 3 through 12. Agendas will provide administrators an overview of the weekly scope of the work. There'll be access to Google breakout rooms for practice and differentiated instruction within the content areas for each instructional block or period. That's something that we're going to ensure that all teachers have equal access next year to the Google suites, all the extensions, so that everyone will have similar fluidity in moving around the platform, both Google and CSO. There was an ask by the teachers to protect the cross-district collaborative times, especially at the elementary level, and also the use of team planning time and PLC or professional learning collaboration center time to identify curriculum priorities and standards and outcomes so that if we have to return to this model, that there'll be teamwork on identifying how to triage the curriculum and make sure that the kids take away the essence of the curriculum. The use of advisory blocks at all levels will ramp up support in executive functioning and social emotional learning. As we know that, we have learned that through this distance learning model that all age groups K through 12 found that there was a need for support in both of those, executive functioning and as social emotional learning. And there'll be standard policies at each grade band for attendance and late work. Those will be established at the local level by teachers. So that's the update. We expect that the plan will be probably shored up tomorrow, late afternoon. I would like to run it by the SEA president one more time. He has said, and I want you to know that we've worked very closely with the union to make sure that we're on the same pathway with this. We want to work together and that's been a very strong suit, I think, in this whole process. We expect to have his remarks back by the end of the day Monday and then it will be up to the principals on when they want to roll that out to the teachers. So that's the update. Dr. Riley?
Yes, the next item is communication with our representatives. We are setting up a phone call with Heather Summers and Kate Rotella and your board chair and some administrators for next week to share some of our concerns and our issues and things that we'll be talking about tonight. A lot of those ideas that were shared with the letters from the community, we want them to know the impacts of some decisions that are made by Hartford or CDC and others compared to where we think we need to go. And we'll be trying to do that next week sometime. The reopening update, Mary Ann?
Don't you like this A-B-A-B pattern we've got going on here? The re-entry update is going to also have, Dr. Riley's going to actually add to this when he speaks to the budget, but I just wanted to overview, really highlight of what Peter reported already and talk a little bit about the impacts instructionally. We basically have three options, as you know. We have the option to come back full-person instructional model as if nothing's changed, which has a very high risk, even if we are trying to employ some of the CDC guidelines. But there's an increased cost for facility upgrades, increased cost for cleaning, disinfectant and custodial staff, increased cost for transportation and bus monitors. You know, it's going to actually be next to impossible for us to maintain that. And the risk, the risk to actually having to transfer back to a remote learning model in one building or district-wide is very, very real. The other model that we have obviously is the hybrid model, which is a medium-risk model with partial staff and student return. We've heard many different rumors around the state from the support from Hartford that they want us to return to a K-7 model in person and have grades 8 through 12 work remotely. We've heard that it will be left up to district decisions. We really just don't know. But whatever we know about a hybrid model, that there's, we don't want to go down that rabbit hole and start planning that until we have more information and guidance from the State Department of Education. Certainly, we're still going to have to do the same things that if everyone comes back with the facilities upgrades, are they going to be identical to if everybody comes back in real time? Increased cost for cleaning and disinfectants and custodial staff are going to be identical. There'll still be increased cost for transportation and bus monitors unless we work with, I mean, this one of the asks we're going to ask our politicians to give us some help and guidance, whether or not there could be a waiver for those transportation regulations that right now are not optional, that we have to do those. There may be an increased cost for substitute teachers on a split model if we have to replace teachers because they become ill or they have children or whatever. There might be some increased costs. They don't want to take the risk of coming back in person. And there's certainly going to be a disruption in staffing with instructional models, whether or not people get sick or whether or not we have A-B patterns of attendance or certain grade levels attending some days and rotating with other days. It's just not going to be ideal, as you know. So just keep that in mind. Obviously, the lowest risk of returning is remotely. If everybody stays remotely, we know that the current model of instruction is not ideal. We've done some work already to shore that up to make it have more structure and predictability for both teachers and students and families. We know that there'll be minimal cost for facility upgrades that may not be necessary come January or February or March. We know that there won't be any additional transportation costs. And we know that the idea that the instruction from the beginning of the school year until it is safe for us to return in real person will be seamless in the sense of it's going to be consistent from day to day until we know that it's safe or there's a vaccine for the children to come back. So the leadership team is working on a document. We plan to actually make that the focus of our June 23 Common Work Day. Again, the principals are looking at having conversations or starting conversations around now that we have an idea of what those academic blocks might look like, what does that mean operationally, should we choose one model or the other? But at the end of the day, we will make our recommendation and it will be the Board of Education's call. So that's the basic update on that. Dr. Riley will build on that in the budget section of the presentation.
And the last item here is the instructional calendar. We've had requests from some of our teachers and curriculum leaders that we may want to consider putting more professional development time upfront because whatever model we come up with is going to be new for us and new for teachers. So I just want to give you a heads up, nothing for action tonight, but we may be looking at, as you know, we have 187-day instructional calendar for our teachers. Five of those are professional development and 182 regular classroom days. We may be looking at having seven days of time to prepare. And that's been a request from teachers. So just to give you a heads up, we may be going back to, at least for this year, 180-day instructional calendar, and that's to help our teachers have time to plan for whatever happens this coming fall. And that's my report. And that's my report.
In that calendar for, if you switch that, those seven days, would that mean that you'd be asking the teachers to come back sooner? Or would there be a change in the dates? I would think they would need to know that as soon as possible.
I'm not sure if we would do that or just go have more P D days upfront and then start the instruction a day or two later. I just, I don't have that answer today, but you're right. If we're going to change the start date, people need to know as soon as possible.
Yes, I, I'm sure people aren't necessarily planning vacations, but they do have kids perhaps going up to college or this and that. And I think out of respect, they need to know that as soon as possible.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any other questions or comments about the superintendent's report at this time? Okay, I'll move on to the health reserve account M O A. I put it on there since this is a special meeting and I wouldn't be able to add it later and hope that we had something complete to share with you. We are, we are that close. We have one piece left to discuss and, and work out. But we're not there yet. So hopefully, very soon, we'll have a draft, a completed draft for, of the M O A for the board to review and to, to vote on. We are looking at developing an advisory committee that will help advise for the M O A and that will have people from Board of Finance, Board of Ed, and the town. So it'll be all, and the work, the people from the town and the Board of Ed, the, the working group, as we call it. So it will be a real combination of people and working on getting that one, that one broker representative, which I believe that piece is all sets. We are moving forward and, and very close to a completed M O A. Next item on the agenda is budget discussion and approval of the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty and the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget.
Yes, thank you. I'll go through this document that I, that I handed out and attached to the agenda. The first section is Board of Ed questions. These are specific questions that you submitted. First one was, what is the cost that we are spending per day that we're supporting the town buildings? And the cost is three hundred and fifty dollars. That's for our staff time plus the disinfectant that we're using. If we were going to continue that into July and August, the cost would be fourteen thousand dollars. We do not have that in our budget to continue this. So if that's something that the town wants, we would have to see how we could work with them to support them from that. I know they appreciate the fact that we've been disinfecting and cleaning on their buildings. I think it's nineteen or twenty different buildings, including fire departments that we've been doing since, I believe it's March thirteenth or so. And the third question, what are the plans for the care federal funds? We don't have an answer yet. We do know that we're going to receive around two hundred and twenty thousand after the private schools get their share of the two hundred and eighty. We do have some expected uses, as I mentioned here, more cleaning and disinfecting, needs for distant learning, including technology, and needs for staff and student mental health. And it was mentioned tonight that would be nice to have like a pot of money or some funds available depending to fill in for the gaps and the needs that we have, and this is, this is something that we could use. And the last one, what is the cost of continued food distribution for July and August? It's estimated for salaries plus the food or materials is fifty thousand dollars. We do not have any money in our, in next year's budget for that, for that expense. However, Gary and Becky are working with the state of Connecticut for a waiver for certain issues. So the federal government could fund our, our food service this, this coming summer. We should know maybe by tomorrow whether that's going to come through or not. We certainly hope it does. It's a wonderful service for, for our town and for the families that need that, need those meals. The second item is the ending balance. There's been a lot of discussion about what we'll have at the end of this current year. The recommended three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to return to the town is available and it's our, if you approve this tonight, we will make sure that the town receives the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There are some other anticipated needs. We've been sharing this with our facilities committee for the past few weeks. They include number one, a purchase of one tractor. This is an item that was in the C I P, but we pulled it when there was a verbal agreement with the town to take over the different landscaping responsibilities at our schools. Because of the budget, the town had to cut those positions or that program from their budget. So for us to maintain our schools, we need this one piece of equipment at a cost of fifteen thousand dollars that we purchased out of this, this fund, this year's fund. We need to purchase new and replacement disinfectant foggers plus the materials at a cost of seventeen thousand one hundred and thirty. That'll give us a head start for the summer and for next fall. The third item is clerical screening of the office desk areas. You'll notice that if you go to the high school, there is a, a, one of those, it's not Plexiglas, it's Isenglass, I believe it's called. It, it's up there. So once a member of the public comes in that our receptionist, our clerical staff are shielded. You've seen those in grocery stores and other places. For us to do that at each of our office areas at each school is a cost of fifteen thousand dollars. The next one is purchase a contract for computer repair and replacement. Due to the distance learning requirements, we are allowing students, families to keep their machines, keep their computers this summer. It would be very, very difficult to collect everything, disinfect it, you know, put it all back into motion again in August. So we wanted to leave that out there with the families, but there will be some costs, not only this summer, but into next year. So this is kind of just an account that's set aside so when a computer breaks or needs to be replaced, we have the funds to do it. And the last one is to install a required wall in the health center. This is the nurse's office, not the, the new health center. And this is a COVID requirement. When all of our other schools have an area where if a student is ill, they can be isolated for an examination. And we do not have that at the middle school. So this would provide that required wall. So those are the only things, everything else we, we pulled out and we, we will not have, not requesting to, to purchase those. The amount then left over after we give three fifty back to the town and spend this hundred and four thousand, we will have about ninety thousand dollars left. And the recommendation, and again, this has gone to the facilities committee, is to add that into the health reserve. You'll see in a minute that we're going to be using some of that health reserve. And the more we can put in there now, the less we'll have to pay back in the future. So that's the, that's the plan for this year's ending balance. The next item is the proposed reductions for next year. I'd like to just remind everyone, I mean, we hear the, all the, the call, you know, don't cut this, don't cut that. And I just want to remind everyone, the recommendation was for us to continue with our current staffing and our current standards, but that just wasn't going to happen. That would have cost a little over a million dollars. Instead, we've been reduced by one point six million from our original proposed budget. So it's our responsibility to make those reductions. This is really divided into two areas, the non-personnel and then the personnel. We tried to put as much of this into non-personnel as possible to avoid the impact on individuals, but also do things that would have the least effect on the instruction of students. So the first thing that, that we're suggesting is using the health benefit reserve of five hundred thousand dollars. We can do that. We have more than, than what's needed in there to meet the M O U requirements. The second would be to charge the town for the use, and this isn't just the use, they use it a lot. And when we have a custodian available, we, we wouldn't be charging. This is for the overtime and the utilities when someone has to, to stay for a meeting or turn on the lights or use the heat, that kind of thing. And the estimate for all the meetings and all the activities is twenty thousand per year. The next is the other post-employee benefits. We talked about this last time, but this is the hundred and twenty five thousand that is not legally required for us to, to put aside. And Gary's recommendation, I concur, is we hold off on, for one year on this. The next is the savings from the oil and gas bid that was just received last month from the original budget, ninety nine thousand dollars. The next few items, we've spent a lot of time in the past month working with our principals and our other department heads on what we can do to avoid personnel reductions. And at the high school, the recommendation is to eliminate ninth grade football, ninth grade basketball, and junior varsity tennis at a savings of fifteen thousand dollars. That's for coaches and for transportation and officials, those kinds of things. And I should point out that in the, in all three of those situations, the football players, instead of being on a ninth grade team, they could also, also be on a J V team. So it just reduces the number of coaches. The same with basketball and J V tennis could be on a varsity tennis. The next item is extracurricular at the middle and elementary schools. These funds were set aside with the savings from the consolidation to add new clubs and new sports and new activities at the middle and the elementary schools. And we could keep the, what was ever, what was there prior to the consolidation and eliminate those stipends that were new this year. The next item is schools instructional supplies and district budgets. Each school gets discretionary funds based on their instructional level and the number of, of students at their school. And we've asked each of the principals to go back through and see what they could cut, basically to be able to keep employees. And these are the numbers, elementary's ten and middle school, ten thousand, the high school, fifteen thousand. And you can see the district office, each of our departments, mainly for conferences and transportation and those kinds of things. You'll notice that technology and operations is, are zero. Of all the things we need to do, Peter needs to be able to disinfect. And I don't want him cutting a budget because that's absolutely crucial. And the same with Chris and the technology, there's a lot of needs with technology. So I, I put them on there, even though that's zero, just so you would know that they offered, but at this point, it's just not, it doesn't make any sense to do that. And the last one is savings from general health benefits. With the reductions enforced, these would be the health benefits part to those employee positions. So the non-personnel savings of the one point six million is nine hundred and sixty three thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. I would just remind everyone that we will need to work to pay back the five hundred thousand into the health benefit reserve. But as you recall, the Board of Finance has said that they plan to reinstate those funds mid-year. So if we do get those, they would go into that fund. So the, the rest of the funds are made up from classified and certificated personnel reductions. And once again, these reductions are all difficult to make. They're not something that we wanted to do and as, but it's something that is required. Under classified personnel, a reduction of eight para positions. These para positions were recommended after talking to all the principals and to Allison about what we can do to maintain all of the I E P requirements, the one-on-one paras, the kindergarten paras. And these were positions that the principals felt they could share paras in certain situations and consolidate some positions. There's three positions at Dean's Mill, three at West Vine, and two at the middle school. And I might say the plan here is to use attrition for, to, for these positions. We already have five and a half resignations towards the eight, and I'm sure we'll have enough because we do every year. So we won't have to lay off anyone. The other one is to reduce classified, either more paras or clerical. And that's to be determined after we know what the configuration is, the plan is for this coming fall. Then the certificated personnel reductions. The first one is the assistant principal at Stonington Middle School. I, the one that's not on here is the dean at the middle school. That was reduced before we even got started. So those, there were those two positions that have been eliminated from the administrative ranks. The next one or two are dealing with science at the high school. The point six science is at the request of a science teacher to go part-time due to family issues. And the one point O science, actually both of them are reductions. Mark went through, through the enrollments in the different classes and felt that science was the area that he could reduce the number of sections, the number of classes, without reducing the offerings. And what that means is if you have two anatomy classes and they're each have twelve students and then maybe you only have one and it has twenty-two in it or whatever it is. So he could, he could reduce the number of sections, the number of classes, but not reduce the classes that students can sign up for, if that makes sense. The class sizes will go up. There, some of them are very low in the low, you know, in the, in the ten to fifteen numbers and will go up closer to twenty. But science was the area that he could reduce. Item number four is the K eight tech person. That individual would then go into a vacant classroom position. We have, we have two vacancies that, in the elementary ranks right now, one from a leave of absence for the year and one from a resignation. The elementary library position, you heard a lot about that tonight. I was not, I, I sent all of you a memo about how that would work. The elimination of the elementary library position, that person would be riffed. But the number of minutes for the elementary library program would stay the same. We would move the middle school librarian to the split position between West Vine and Dean's Mill. So the elementary schools would not lose one minute of library time. The middle school would lose some, but the current schedule for the librarian at the middle school is one library class and basically the sixth graders get one quarter each of, of, of library research skills. The rest of her day, that, that's one period, four quarters, that covers all the sixth graders. She then teaches encore classes or just general, she's in the library helping out. So we're in looking at this, this is again, all of our recommendations, talking to principals. We, we feel that we could provide the elementary librarian and the reduction at the middle school would really be in the encore areas. And the plan here is we're moving, we have a, the dean would bounce back into the business program at the high school. And then a business person would go to the tech program and that tech individual would then go to the middle school to take on the encore classes. So we're able to keep the encore classes, keep the elementary librarian, and by reducing one library position district wide. The next one is West Vine. As I mentioned, it, it says retire, it's really a resignation. The teacher is moving out of the area. So you might want to change that. That was a typo. We, again, we have two, two vacancies, one for a leave of absence for the year and one for the resignation. The, the high school Spanish, the, you can see there's a zero savings as a person coming back from a leave of absence, and that would bump somebody who's already there. So there wouldn't be a reduction in classes or anything else. It's just a different person that would be riffed in that case. And the last one is, just last week, we had a resignation of the middle school full-time art teacher. And Tim Smith had looked at that and to continue to provide art at the same level to everyone. And the school, he only needs three classes instead of five. So we would hire a three fifths teacher for, for the art class. So those were the, you know, after, again, hours and hours of discussion, what are the, the least impactful on students and on teachers, on a school, on the program, on a well-rounded program, whether it's distance or it's in or it's a hybrid? And these would be the recommendations from, from your superintendent with input from literally everybody. And before I go to questions, I would like to get into this other idea of potential new And before I go to questions, I would like to get into this other idea of potential new costs. You heard some of those concerns by community members. I want to point out that this report, Peter did an amazing job. I asked Peter a couple, I want a week or two ago to give us an, an analysis based on the CDC. Their, their three levels, give us the hype, give us the middle one. Cause we know that the one where everybody just comes back, that's just not safe. And they say it's not safe. So give us, what would it take for us financially? If we could provide all the safety constructs that the CDC requires. And he did this, I thought this was a great report. In fact, I've had, we've had comments from after others, other districts have read the, the article that was in this morning's paper saying, thank you, somebody finally took this on and put this into perspective as to what it might cost to do a particular level. I would like to point out, this is not a recommendation, this is not what we're going to do. This was something, it's a piece of information I want our board to see because there's financial impacts, there's safety impacts, there's facilities impacts, there's mental health impacts. There's a lot of things that we all are going to have to consider before we come up with a final determination. And the, the idea here was to show you that really it, this, even if we could come up with 4.3 million dollars, which I don't, I don't really want to go to our Board of Finance and ask them for 4.3 million dollars. I don't think that's appropriate. We still couldn't, we don't, we can't have 68 more buses. First student can't do that. And even if they could, we don't have space in our classrooms to fit everyone within social distancing. We, I just wanted everyone to see that there are significant impacts based on CDC requirements. And there will be some based on what the state, what the governor says, what the commissioner says. And we will be working in the next probably month or so in providing you with all the different information, all the updates on, you know, social distancing and, and bus transportation requirements. And eventually, when we know what, what the state is asking, what the CDC is asking, we'll provide you with all of the information. And then I will be making a recommendation to you. This will be your decision. It will be, here's my recommendation and here's five options and parameters and, and how things would be impacted if we go a different way. So this again is not, this was simply, it not meant to be a shock value, but it was certainly meant to be the way people are talking, oh, let's just do this. It, it's not that simple. It's very, very expensive. And in this case, the plan here, we couldn't do it anyway. We couldn't fit all the students safely into our schools. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of this.
I have, I guess, two questions. One thing is, I believe I spoke with Peter and Dr. Riley earlier. And Peter will be providing some of the resources and where he got some of this information from. And we'll be putting a packet together, I believe, and putting that up on our, our website for access for, for people.
I'm sorry, we did have questions about where did this information come from? So Peter's going to put in citations and references and we'll put not the whole report on the website along with the citations and references, so people could see where this information came from.
I think it's, you know, obviously we're not going to go through all of these, but I think it helps for all of us to have an information for the background and, and what we might need to address with our state legislators or, or going forward. And also I will be providing you with all of the emails that we got for the public comments so that you have all of those. And I think I've reached out to all of those people to say, if I have their permission, I also want to share those with our state representatives so they know what our community is, is thinking. And my, one of my main questions before we get into some of the other meat is that health reserve amount that you said, I'm extremely concerned and I want to make sure that we're following this MOA that we have worked so hard on and make sure that we're following the guidelines, even though it's not signed yet, but that we're following everything that we've attempted to put forward to this point.
Yes, absolutely. Even using the 500,000 now in this budget, the MOA, we suggest 20 to 30%. We will be at, I believe it's 34, 35% even after we use this. So we're well above the highest level of suggestion in the MOA.
Are there, who would like to start with their comments or questions?
Ben, I think you've really done due diligence in cutting and considering. It's been difficult. I still maintain that if we had not given those raises, I bet you that we would have been able to approach the Board of Finance and ask them for some of the monies that we wanted. But I, I think it looks like we're a bit of denial of the extent of this crisis by not having done that. And that's my comment.
Are there any comments or questions on the proposed changes? Because this will be something that will, we, I'm sorry, that we will need to vote on.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Jack.
So I have a couple of questions. And I realize that this is all still in progress, so I don't want to waste a lot of time. I know it's a long meeting, but one is, I, the wall that you're constructing, I think it was like $23,000 to construct a wall. Yeah. Why so expensive? I've never, it seems crazy to me. Is it like a hundred, 100-foot wall made out of concrete and rebar and requires extra, I don't know, engineering or what, what is it?
I can chime in on this. It's a, we have to create a wall to make a separate room in the Stonington Middle School nurses' room that contains electrical, plumbing, a doorway, and a window. Generally speaking, this type of construction costs that much to do. That's, that's based on the experience that we've had on creating two similar walls for the health center at Stonington Middle School as well.
Okay, seems awfully high, but I'll take your word for it. Next question is about, will students, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but will students, and I'm, one of the comments during the comment section made me think of this from one, from a citizen. Will students be required to wear, according to those regulations, the, the like the O95 masks? Or I don't know what you call them, but they're like the certified masks? Or will just like a cloth covering be sufficient? And will, has that even been determined yet?
They, they do not have to wear the N95 masks. They just need to wear a cloth mask or a procedure mask, which could be the paper disposable masks.
But Jack, the, the reason that it's so expensive, and that is a current CDC requirement that, or guidelines, recommendations, that everybody in the school would have to change them, I think, twice a day. So you times that, times the cost, it's a half a million dollars. So again, not that we're going to do that or it may change, but we just wanted to, you know, based on today, these are these enormous costs. So right now, everybody would have to wear a mask all day long. Even can you imagine a kindergartner trying to wear a mask all day long? I mean.
Yeah, no, I, I, believe me, I'm, I'm, as someone that's out in the general public all day, I, I have found the cloth mask is just much more, I'm able to just focus on my work. So I, that's part of the reason I asked that question. I can't imagine being a student with one of those white masks on all day, surgical masks. And then my last question is, when you're, I know transportation is one of the, the main, you know, the big, big ticket items. Have, and I, and I realize it's a requirement, it's public school system. But have we thought about just asking students if they could just provide their own transportation? I mean, still, you know, figure out what that number is that actually needs transportation? Because I have a feeling that a lot of families would be willing to figure that component out to kind of help the school system out. If, you know, if it would enable them to go back to school. Because obviously having these kids stay home all day long by themselves is not good. It's just not a good recipe for development and, you know, mental health. And, and although I will say, and again, it's a long meeting, last comment on that is with the distance learning, there are some advantages to it, as we've discussed in teaching and learning. So I, I do hope we really consider the, the hybrid model. And so if you can answer my question about the transportation and asking parents and students if, if perhaps they could provide their own and if that's even a, a, something that we can ask.
There, there are two things with that. One of them, we could ask the legislator or even the governor to, to take the mandatory aspect out of that. So, so we don't have to do it for every child. Right now, we have to have a seat for everybody. And that's why you see these buses driving around with, you know, only a quarter full. So that's one thing we're going to do. And the second one is, you're right on, we could ask people in our, our surveys, as we know what we're doing, are you willing to provide your own transportation? And some parents may want to provide it anyway. So yes, Jack, we'll ask probably all three of those questions.
Okay, this sounded, oh, sorry, Jack, I was just going to say, it sounded like a lot of parents were volunteering that in their letters, that that would be something they'd be more than willing to do.
Yeah, I, I heard that Candace, but I figured if the school sent out a survey and kind of just got a hard number, that would really help with the numbers.
Yeah.
And then my, my last question is, so in the end, with this, this librarian at Dean's Mill, is, I, I got a little confused, some, I'm easily confused. Is it being covered by someone at the middle school? Is that what I heard? I mean, is, I, I misunderstood what you were trying to say there. Can you just re-clarify?
Sure, right now, the elementary schools, they have one librarian split between both elementary schools and one tech STEM person split between both schools. The tech STEM person is being put into a classroom.
Okay, okay.
So the lib, but, but the concern was the library. The librarian is one full-time split between both schools. We will move the middle school librarian to that position. So they will have exactly the same amount in the elementary schools as they do now for the library services. Then what happens, it, what's, it's important, what happens at the middle school, as I said, most of the current librarian's time at the middle school is spent with encore classes or general library services that other paras and others could do, which is the plan. The, there is one period with sixth graders on a quarter rotation of library research skills. So the encore classes would be covered by, again, but the tech person coming down from the high school because we bumped the dean, that there's a, you know, domino effect there. So basically, you know, we're providing actually a couple more encore classes at the middle school and the full library service at the elementary school.
So what, what, are there any impacts, negative impacts to eliminating this position? I mean, in terms of, for the students?
In turn, in terms of the library at the elementary, no, it's exactly, exactly the same thing. The middle school, it's a plus and a minus. The middle school will lose these quarter, sixth grade quarter library research skill class. One quarter for a sixth grader, but they'll gain other web design and tech and other, because the person coming down from the high school will be able to teach more tech and encore classes. So they're, they're getting another service instead of a quarterly sixth grade library research skill.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, yeah, you're welcome.
Can I say perhaps that if we do get all of our ECS money and we get the money back from the Board of Finance, perhaps mid-year, if we find that we're lacking on that research assistance, teaching skill at the middle school, maybe we could add it in something half year if we find we're, we're missing it, if that, if we get those funds. There's a lot of ifs there, but to keep that idea open, because research at that level is really important.
Okay, we can do that.
Are there any other comments on the proposed changes in the budget for the, for this year? Cause we do need to have a vote on it. So if there's any other questions, I want to make sure that those get asked. Okay, so I guess my question would be then is, how would we phrase this as far as a motion? Because we're not talking a specific amount, we're talking these changes that you, that you created.
I would suggest two things. I would suggest approving the ending balance as presented and the proposed reductions for 2021 as presented.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Do you want that as two separate motions then?
No, that's not necessary.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion then that we approve the 2019, 2020 changes and the 21, 20 changes suggested as well.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I remain reluctant in this because I am sorry that these reductions had to take place because I think it could have been creative about keeping some of them. I still don't understand about the librarian, but I think there's going to be a lot of shuffling. So I'll be reluctant in my vote.
Okay, thank you, Heidi. Maybe we can have more clarification for you? Or do you think you've heard as much as you need to hear?
I, I think that it's pretty obvious.
Okay, thank you.
Regardless of my vote.
Thank you. Okay, with, with no other discussion, do I have a vote? And all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? So all seven in favor, am I correct? Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Attorney Chinney's update. I do not have any update on the OCA report yet. And the update from Attorney Chinney is quite brief. There wasn't a lot of activity, not a, not a lot of interviews, which means I guess in her eyes, it's probably slowing down. And I will, I will read her, her update for us. Below, I summarize the further steps I've taken to investigate the above-named matter since our May 19th meeting, my update from the board's May 26th meeting. I have conducted interviews of two additional former students and one additional adult. I have also received information from an adult who provided me with some documents. All interviews continue to proceed remotely. I am hoping that my most recent interview of a student will lead to at least one additional referral. A few witnesses have come forward. One such witness indicated more current concerns unrelated to Mr. Chokis. And I also indicated that others share those concerns. I'll be following up with the second interviews with the administration to address information I learned during the course of the investigation. However, I believe that barring another group of witnesses coming forward, it will be time to wind the investigation down and provide the board with a final report. Before I do that, I would like to reach out one last time on the Stonington Community Forum and on the board's website with a statement indicating that the investigation will be ending soon and looking for any last interviews. If there are any questions about the course of the investigation to date, please do not hesitate to contact me. So I think our decision needs to be here. Do we want her to reach out on the forum again? It did create a lot of. again? It did create a lot of responses, but it also created a little bit of angst as far as her putting that out there on the forum. So I'd like some opinion from the board on that. On the board's website, definitely. I'm sure we'd all be in agreement with that. And getting the word back out there, I'm sure we can get that out there in the newspaper as well, her contact information. Can I have some board's feedback on that, on the update?
I think definitely, if we're going to go on, the Stonington Community Forum would be better than the board's website. That, it's certainly a lot more kids that are involved in that.
Any, I'm sorry.
Alexa, I think you're muted.
Thanks, Candace. I agree with Heidi.
Sounds good.
Also, hey, Alexa, can you send me a link to her email link? So I can, okay, thank you.
Oh, perfect. Yep, I'll send that to everybody. Okay? Okay, so I'll let her know that we would like to post the information again on the forum and still on the board's website, and I'm sure we can get that in the day. And then see, and she will schedule interviews with the administration to help come back around from any questions that might have arisen from that. And then we'll proceed with information from there. I'm not sure if we have any other comments. Ally, do you have anything to say tonight?
Um, yeah, I'd just like to let the board know that I have a letter that I'm going to be sending out tomorrow morning. I just didn't want it to get lost in all of what was going on in this meeting, because it has been a long meeting. So I'll keep my comments short. But it's just about how I feel. Stonington High School perpetuates this culture that allows for assault and harassment to happen, and why students don't feel comfortable reporting. And I think that there's a lot of valuable information in this letter that I'll present to you guys tomorrow morning. And I really know that there's so much going on right now, and next year is, like, it's very stressful to plan everything. But I really think it's important to not gloss this issue over, because whether we're in school or out of school, hustle and harassment affects students at Stonington on a daily basis. And I do think that it is a huge issue in our district. So I just would appreciate if you guys took the students' perspective and ran with it as much as you could. And I will also be sending it to the private investigator as well. That's all.
Thank you, Ally. And as always, thank you for everything. Any other comments?
No, I think that's a really important perspective for us to continue. And we will be doing this for you, Ally. I promise you.
Thank you.
Candace has just said she got kicked off the meeting. So I'm sorry for Candace. I'll let you know if she adds anything. Maybe Chris can get her back in. Thank you, Heidi, for those comments. We do have monthly reports. Are there any comments or questions on those? Committee reports, finance and facilities, subcommittee, and teaching and learning. Were there any comments that needed to be added compared to the minutes that have been drafted? Items for future agendas. I know we do need to schedule a meeting for our goals. We were late on that. We were supposed to do it this year in May. With everything going on, it just wasn't conducive to doing so. So we will need to be scheduling that and also the superintendent's evaluation. I've been trying to wait for times for both of those where we don't have to be doing it virtually, because those things are so personal and so much more effective to be in person. So I have to see what I can do about any of that and get back to you and listen to all of your suggestions as well. So any suggestions on that, let me know. And if anybody would like to be involved with our, working with the state representatives, please let me know. And I can loop you in with that. Are there any other suggestions for items for future agendas?
I just thought of one randomly. And it's from, Ally just made me think of it, because I have had some really good conversations around our dinner table with, with my daughters. I have three daughters. One's at the high school, two now are in college. And they were reminiscing about their experiences at Stonington High School, the two that are out. And I think one thing that we need to discuss, and it's a, it's a difficult issue. I know I have had already difficult discussions with, with other board members about this, but it's about student expression. I would imagine with everything that's going on, that students will want to express themselves. And we need to, I think, ahead of time, figure out what's acceptable. My daughters told me, and it's completely anecdotal, that a student was sent home at one point with a Black Lives Matters t-shirt, and then another student had a Confederate flag on their chest and was not sent home. Again, anecdotal from my two daughters, maybe it's not true.
I can testify that that is true.
That is true.
That is true. Both of those things did happen.
Okay, thank you, Ally. So if that's the case, we need to preemptively sit down and have a discussion. Because I, when I first came on the board, I was very, very disappointed with the administration's response when we had the gun rally, the anti-gun rally or anti-school shooting rally at the high school. And I know Caroline, my middle daughter, had wanted to share statistics about gun violence, and she was prohibited from doing that. So rather than wait till the heat of the moment, when there's an incident and a kid comes to school and they express themselves, and it turns out to be a big, full-blown discussion, and we, none of us can agree on what's, what's in a public school should be allowed or not allowed, I think it would be important at some point, maybe it's in the policy subcommittee, but we need to talk about that, because it's important to me that students have a right to express themselves, but it doesn't at all, you know, impede on the learning environment, or, you know, bully other students, or, you know, that type of thing. So I would like that to be placed on some agenda. Again, it could be a subcommittee, but...
I think both the policy and then maybe, maybe preceding the policy, maybe one of our board retreat or goal meetings where we can sit, where we sit and talk about concepts and ideas, those are always really, really good for us. Maybe that's a good starting point. And then we bring it to, okay, how do we implement that? What can we implement? And how do we go about it? So we're not dealing with it when it's a crisis.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea. Okay.
Thank you.
So I just would like to...
Just remind me.
So I just want to go back to what I had proposed at the very beginning, maybe at the inappropriate place, but as I said, I don't think it really had one. But I think we have a very large issue here in the community. And I think that we have a role as the education center, as I said, to be a leadership, to take leadership in a dialogue and begin, because I don't know how honest we are in discussion about it. What, what are we really talking about? Are we talking about bias? Are we talking about racial discrimination? Are we talking about bullying? It's a large arena that we're dealing with, and we've begun to deal with it with, say, futures, with workshops that we're doing. So that's an aspect of it. But this is larger about, about what sort of biases we have, whether they be explicit biases or implicit. I think that there has to be self-reflection about that to decide what it is that we honestly think or feel. And I would be glad to talk to Mary Ann about that, because I think that she is really the leader in this.
That's a great idea, Heidi. And maybe roll in some of our mental health counselors, and maybe you can be the point person for that and go with this. I think it's a great idea, and it can't hurt. It's a way to reach out to the community during the, during the summer months, some outside reading. Neat idea. What do other people think?
I agree. I think it, you know, it shows that we care, and that we want to give people a forum to, you know, have a discussion. And I think that's, that's what we're all about. We're all about listening and learning. And I, I think it's an excellent idea, Heidi, and thanks for sharing.
I think it's, I think it's having to go through teaching and learning curriculum is the appropriate place for it.
Yeah.
But I guess I wanted to do it now. Teaching and learning, I guess we meet next week, is it?
Well, Heidi, you could probably work directly with Mary Ann, if she could direct you with whomever else within the district would need to be helpful or worked with. And then you could be that point person who leads the reading group, the discussion, or however that might work. We can, I think we can figure that out. And then you can continue to loop it up with the teaching and learning rather than waiting, because it seems to be a pressing situation.
I think it is. But I think Mary Ann has to be in agreement with this. Like, what, one more thing that we dumped on your shoulders, but...
Heidi, how about the two of you have a discussion, then we figure it out from there, and you can bring it back to the board.
Okay.
You're the go.
Okay for you?
Sure. And I think, I think just to frame everything up, that the racism equity piece is different than the Me Too piece. And I've, I've done some extensive work in this in other districts with Les Munrois on facilitating difficult conversations about race. So Heidi, why don't you just, I'll get in touch with you via email, and we can contact each other by phone and talk about some conversations that I've already started with my real curriculum squad today, about what we're going to be doing to start leading some of this work in the district.
Thank you very much, Mary Ann. Are there any other, like, board comments or concerns?
Yeah, I had asked about some information in regards to the budget. This is my fifth meeting, I think.
It's probably my fault, Jack, on this one. It's been a crazy month with budgets and all that. And I do know that Gary is working on some different ideas to make, to make presentation and everything easier and smoother. And perhaps you're the perfect person to sit with him and say yea or nay, because that way you can look for that information and say, yeah, I get it, yeah, no, this isn't working.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Blame me on that one.
Honestly, I don't think, you're doing your best. And by the way, the 20 minutes that you read all the comments, I don't know how you did it, so thank you. But it's really some very specific questions about some specific accounts. But all he has to do is, I would assume, print out the information and send it to me. That's all I'm looking for at this point.
I will make sure I make that happen and not forget about it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or concerns? Well, I just want to say, tonight, it was a lengthy, productive meeting. Thank you, everybody, for your time, your attention, your information, your input, your points of view. Candace, so great to see you and have you here. And Ally, oh my goodness, we will miss you next year. Good luck to you. It's been a pleasure having you. And do we know your replacement?
Thank you so much. And yes, my replacement will be Lily Hockbissand, who is just an incredible person. And I know that she will do an amazing job as the representative.
Okay, thank you very much. Good luck to you. We wish you all the best. And I need a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Do I have a second?
Attend.
Yeah.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night, and we'll see each other soon.
Be safe, everyone.
Thank you.